I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If everyone could take a minute to make sure their cell phones and electronic devices are silent, we'd appreciate that.
I guess the first person we give up is Laura.
Good evening and welcome to the final community forum for the 1920 school budget presentations. This presentation, unlike some of the others, is not meant to be interactive. It's meant to be informative, summary, and for the Board of Education to know kind of where we are because they will have some decisions to make as we move forward. So we're going to start with what are our budgetary assumptions. We're assuming that our state aid as per the governor's runs right now will increase by 3.33 percent or $397,000 over last year's budget. Under our expenditures, due to enrollment increases and a bubble at the third grade, we will need an extra FTE for a third grade teacher, .45 FTEs of teaching staff for the supplemental activities like our music, phys ed, those sort of things. We have from last year an increase of one FTE for a cleaner that was hired in the 1819 school year that we want to continue forward. .74 FTEs is for the fitness center staffing that allowed the Board of Education to fulfill its promise to the community and open up the new fitness center to the community. And a .24 FTE increase in the clerical staff to assist in the movement of some of the special education reporting and billing over to the business office so that we can start to prepare for the impending retirement of our special ed director and so that her staff can be concentrating in this last year with her on how they're going to acclimate the new So we're going to look at our expenditures first. Our overall general support, well, what is that? That is the superintendent's office, the business office, and buildings and grounds. It's going to go down 8.83 percent or $357,000. Why? Because for the past three years, our district as a component district of Bosse's has been paying the local share, the unaided portion of their capital project as what is our component share to that. So we will be done with that payment in June of this year, so it won't be going forward. So there's a reduction. Administrative improvements is going to decrease by $47,000, 5.21 percent. That's because we had some high estimates in there for Bosse services that really haven't been used the past few years, so we're trying to right-size the budget down to make sure that we're accounting for things properly. The occupational education decreased by $69,000. We did not decrease opportunities for students. Again, there was a budgetary number in there that was a little bit higher than what we were utilizing, so we're right-sizing the budget in an effort to contain the taxes. So where did our costs go up? Well, they went up in instructional, which is a good place for them to go up. That's a program that supports the students directly. That went up 2.25 percent or $346,000. People transportation increased 3.66 percent or $76,000. Some of that increase is as we're preparing for higher fuel costs. As you're seeing at the pumps, they go up all the time. Now, 18 months from now, I have to have enough money in the budget in case they keep going up, so that's part of the reason. Part of it is staffing increases due to contractual obligations. So then civic activities. Last year was my first year here, and one of the questions that I was asked often was, what are civic activities? We let the community come in and use our facilities. Sometimes we need to have our IT staff work overtime to support them if they're using the auditoriums with our specialized equipment, or we may need to have a cleanup person from buildings and grounds available for them. So that supports being able to bill and have that, those infrastructures ready. We may or may not use it depending on the use asked for the year, but if I haven't budgeted for it 18 months in advance, I don't get to utilize it. That cost is going up $17,700. That relates to the .34 FTEs directly of our staffing for the fitness center to open it up to the community. Our employee benefits, they increased 2.9 percent or $194,000. We were very fortunate this year that both our employee retirement and teacher retirement systems, percentage of the contribution from the district, went down because our health insurance increased 12 percent this year. And that's due to the actual claims that are going through our claims department for our members. So our debt service, what is the debt service? Well, in 2015, the district approved a capital project. Every year since, as we've built it, we ban a bond anticipation note, which is a one-year short-term loan that we go out and secure in order to have it available and use those monies for that year's building. So this year, we're at full, we're going out to bond, we're anticipating the project to complete in September of this year. We were fortunate to have a phase four because we had some significant cost savings. So our debt service is going to go up $984,000 over last year. And we had a year last year was kind of an anomaly, which is not uncommon to school districts. Our debt service payments, as the old debt fell off and we started finalizing this project, there was a year lag between the two. So that was why last year's tax cap was so low and this year's is much higher, is because this debt service increase, which is typical in districts, we try to avoid it, but sometimes when you have good bidding and you have significant savings, the project goes out a little longer than you had originally anticipated. Think about it, back in 2015, they were hoping the project to be done. In 2018, we didn't run out of money, so here we are in 2019. Not a bad thing, but it kind of messes with some of our formulas. So our total expenditures are going up 4.2 percent in what's being presented, $1.2 million. So how are we going to pay for this? And how do we decide how to pay for this? So school or property taxes, they're determined by this Board of Education, the level at which they wish to go out. Foundation aid, that's the money in state aid that we're giving for new initiatives, $28,000. It's not going to go very far for folks. Our state aid increase for expense-driven aids, those are aids, those are monies we spent in the 1819 school year that we will get a reimbursement based on a complex formula of $369,000 from the state. So they've, these are the expense-driven aids you're hearing about in this year's budget talks. Our federal aid, that's the Medicaid that pays for related services of OT, PT, speech, things like that for some of our more fragile students. So that's going up about almost $12,000. Our miscellaneous local revenue, well, our special ed director does a great job of keeping kids in district, keeping them closer to home. And when she has room in a classroom and it doesn't increase spending costs, she offers out to neighboring districts, would you like to bring your students to our program? So we're going to see an increase in those, and we also think that there'll be a slight increase in our sales tax. And those two main components will be about $108,000 for next year. Appropriated fund balance, that's the access from prior years that the Board of Education sets aside to reduce taxes. And then we have reserves. So the appropriated fund balance, the reserves in the school taxes are all items that this Board of Education will have to make decisions on so that we can complete the budget process. So I want to start talking about our year-to-year expenditures. We're going to start with expenditure categories. General support, which is the district office, the business office, buildings and grounds, instructional, which is everything that is directly related to students, their transportation, and then we've lumped together the employee benefits, the debt service, civic activities, and interfund transfers. Because those really are add-ons that are necessary for doing the instructional, so we just like to lump them together to make it easier. So in 2018-19 in June, we had a budget that was adopted with a total expenditures of Our general support, what we're proposing this year is to go down to $357,000, which is the release of our payment for debt service to Bosse's. Our instructional, that dollar value is $346,000. And our people transportation is $76,000. Between our employee benefits and debt service and civic activities, those are the ones that increased, they're going up $1.19 million. For a total expenditure increase of $1.2 million or $31,353,121. That's where we are today in combining everything that we've been presenting to the Board in the past. So our year-to-year revenues. Property school tax, right now, we are showing a zero change. State aid is going up the total of the reimbursement and the $28,000 of new funding to $397,000. Federal aid is just shy of $12,000. Miscellaneous is up $108,000 for $518,482. Wait a minute, I don't think that that matches. So we need to look at the next number, which is our budget gap of $744,509. That's the task now that I'm going to present to the Board of Education and say, what are we going to do with that gap? But let's look at the next slide, because where are we going to go from here? There are some choices. We have taxes versus revenues. I'd like to start us with the property tax cap. 1 percent of the levy, why do I start with that? Because it's an easy number that once you have your head wrapped around what 1 percent of the levy is. Cindy, you need to go one more? Thank you. 1 percent of the levy for 1819 was $142,759. Because we had the $66,000, $66 increase last year, 1 percent of the levy now goes to $143,420. So that's kind of how it works. The reason I show you 2 percent of the levy is so that you can look at it and say, well, if I just multiply 1 percent by whatever percent I'm talking about, I can easily move forward into this and I can get some sort of idea on my own where we're going. So every year, the property tax cap formula comes up with a maximum allowable levy limit. That is a percentage of increase that can happen that requires a 50 percent simple majority of 50 percent plus one, or .46 for the 1819 school year. Remember when we talked about some debt service fell off last year? And because we were good at our bidding process, that we had extra money, so our debt service, our capital project was extended a year, that takes it to 5.9 percent. That was the thought process between last year where the Board of Education attempted an override to do the 2 percent, where they would have kept that a little more level, which would have happened had we not had such good bond bidding result. So our maximum allowable levy limit, the most that we can go out for and still be at the tax cap is $846,786, significantly higher than last year's $66,066. So if you look what's scrolling on the screen next, we have the maximum tax compliant levy increase is $846,786. So that's the maximum dollars that we can go out and be tax cap compliant. So I think it's important knowing where we can go to see where we've been. So if you look at the last 10 years, which is what this screen depicts, you can see that in 1819, our true value, the true value was assuming that every property is worth the same, no matter what the assessment is, but the market value is the same across the district. So the true value in 2010-11 that we taxed at was $18.12. That's the same dollar value we taxed at in 2018-19. And that dollar value wound up being a 5.58 percent decrease from the prior year. So now the tax cap kind of looks like it makes sense because this year we can go up 5.9, but we can see 5.58, we went down the year before. That's where we got a peak in a valley because we had some of our mortgage payment fell off, and the new mortgage payment had not yet come on for capital improvements. So if you look at 2018-19, it equaled 2010-11's tax rate. So where do we go from here? We move forward, and we look at our potential tax increase based on the district-wide true value. So again, we're going to start with our levy increase in percentages, our total dollars. We're going to look at what our 1819 tax rate was from the last slide, which was $18.12. Our potential 1920 tax rate, depending on which level we utilize, increase in per thousands of assessed true value because that's how their tax bill is calculated. And then we're going to multiply that number by 100 to see how much a $100,000 home would cost. So again, we started with the 1 percent, which is just to give everybody a base. If you want to go lower than 1 percent, it's easier to start at 1 percent. So we would have $143,420 or $18.12 of the 1819 rate would move up to $18.31 for 1920 or 19 cents on every $1,000 of assessed true value. So on a $100,000 home, that would become $19 a year. So if we look at the 2 percent, which again I said we showed to see that it's just simple, it doubles, it's a little bit off because of rounding, so it goes to 37 cents or $37. Now you're going to wonder, where do these other numbers come from? 3.18 percent. $456,76 is the amount of increase in our mortgage payment, our debt service. So if we simply go back to the voter authorization from December 2015, where 67 percent of the voters said, yes, we will support this capital project, that was 642 of the 954 voters, said, yes, we're willing to pay this. This year, when we pay the full implication of that debt service, it would go up 58 cents per thousand or $58 on a $100,000 home. Now we have the number of 3.85 percent. What does that include? Well, we talked a few slides ago that our enrollment has increased, and now we have a need to increase a third grade teacher. The cost for the third grade teacher plus the cost of the debt service or the mortgage payment now brings that up to 3.85 percent. So we would have to raise $552,167 just to cover those costs. So we would go from 1812 per thousand to 1882, increase it 70 cents or $70 a year. But we have one more number on here, and that's the maximum allowable levy limit. That's how much taxes can be raised in our district, and we're still within the property tax cap. 5.9 percent, $846,786, taking us from 1812 per thousand to 1919, or raising it $1.07 or $107 on a $100,000 home. All of these tax rates are tax compliant. What does that mean? Well, we're going to look at the next slide and say the impact of the potential increases to individual taxpayers. At this point, the only thing I have shown to the Board of Education is a 1 percent, 2 percent, those are for comparative. 3.18, that includes all of the debt service. 3.85 includes third grade plus the debt service, or 5.9 the maximum. They are all tax cap compliant, and all eligible taxpayers would receive their New York State rebate checks as they have in prior years. That one is huge because I understand from last year that that's significantly a concern of our taxpayers. So we're going to look next at how else we set taxes versus reserves. So we're going to look, and we're going to say, what happens if we decide to close some of our gap with reserves? So I'm looking at the reserves that we have. Workers' compensation, because we are considered, we're part of a consortium, so we're self-funded for workers' compensation. Unemployment, unlike a business that pays a percentage of all their payroll in an unemployment tax, we pay the full cost of unemployment when someone goes, loses their position and we don't have work for them. There's a retirement contribution that only covers our support staff's retirement by law, yes. And we have a liability reserve, which is in case we were to have a liability that falls through the cracks of all of our insurances so that we wouldn't have to, we wouldn't have to go to the tax cap and necessarily raise it, we would use the reserve to help soften that blow. Then we have the tax sertiorari, which I say terribly, reserve, which is in case somebody goes through and they petition that they need to lower their assessment and they win. And so we can put funds aside for that so that if that occurs, we don't have to pay that from the current year's budget. Then we have employment benefit. It's called an accrued liability, which I didn't put all up here because it gets to be a lot of words that people get lost in. So it's employee benefit is for people when they retire and leave the district, or if they're working here and they have some accrued vacation time and they were to quit. So we would have to pay that out. That pot of money, we can only use to offset those items, and it is strictly controlled by the New York State Comptroller. We have a capital reserve for vehicles, which this year we will be asking for $629,000 voter authorization to purchase some buses and some maintenance equipment. Then we have a capital reserve for building fund, and since we don't have an active project going out to vote, that stays static at the 2.5 million that it currently has. And we have a repair reserve. Those are funds we've set aside for unknown repairs that occur in an emergency, one of them being the COGEN, which is still fully supporting the high school. So if we have a break at the COGEN, we need to get that fixed and up and running very quickly. So you're going to start to see in the next, this slide and the next, I've done the same thing, I've looked at, if the Board of Education were to do a 1 percent increase, what would be the net effect at the end? We would look at what our workers' comp expenses projected to be. We took that out, so that would be $298,761 left at year-end. Unemployment would go down from $335,000 to $308,000. And remember, we had to increase our expenditure because in October, unemployment, the maximum for someone being laid off, went from $405,000 to $450,000, items out of the district's control. Our retirement contribution, that's to set aside funds for when our support staff retire, that would go from $3 million down to 2.5. Our liability, which I would utilize to close the budget gap because we wouldn't be raising anywhere near the taxes that we need to close the budget gap, that would go down to $48,000. And then when you see the employee benefit, we have estimates of who might retire next year, and so that goes from $1.1 million now to $976,000. That will stay static throughout the presentation. Our capital equipment for vehicles will go down to $629,000 approximately that we're asking voters to authorize in a separate proposition. The capital building reserve stays static because we're not planning on utilizing it. We don't have a capital vote prepared. And our repair reserve, we're not planning on using because that's for an unexpected repair, so that would stay static. So at year-end, we would go from having $9.9 million in savings to 8.1 if we do a 1 percent levy. So now I'm going to move a little more quickly. So 9.9 now becomes 8.3 million if we raise the taxes. You see an inverse relationship occurring here. As taxes go up, the reliance on the reserves is reduced. So again, we're going to start on this screen. We have all the reserves listed. We have all the projected balances. And now we're going to talk about them at the 3.18 increase. And so now they would go from 9.9 million down to 8.4 million if we were to simply increase the levy enough to cover the capital project debt service payment, the mortgage payment. If we're looking to cover the mortgage payment and simply the third grade teacher, we levy 3.85 percent, and it would go from 9.9 down to 8.5 million. And then if we were to go for the maximum allowable limit, which would still be tax cap compliant, would be 5.9 percent, which go from 9.9 million down to 8.8 million left in reserves at year-end. So now comes the big part. What am I expecting at the end of this result? So if we look at the next slide, we can see that you have some decisions to make, and right now you're slated to make them for the next board meeting on April 16th. The assumption is, on April 1st, New York State will adopt a budget and state aid will be finalized. Those numbers will be factored into any decision. So the question I have of the Board is, where do you want to go from here? Whether we reduce expenditures, if so, how much? Do you want to increase revenues? If so, how much? Do you want to do it through property taxes? Do you want to utilize reserves? Do you want me to go through a combination of all of these? So now I'd kind of like to open it up to the Board if you want to have some discussion.
All right, so my opinion on this is back in December of 15, the voters of Eden with one of the second highest turnouts since 2014 voted for the capital project. And to me, the minimum amount of taxes we should go out is 3.18 percent, because the voters voted for that back in 2015. Now the bond is due, comes into the tax formula, now is the time to start paying for it. So in looking at a starting point, 3.18 percent to me is a responsible start to the discussion. Anything less than that is, to me, is irresponsible because that's what the voters authorized back in December of 2015.
So I'd just like Laura to clarify, clearly our teachers don't make $100,000 when they, when we add a teacher. So there's more than a teacher when we take a look at that number, right? So it's got other pieces embedded in it. So if you could just get into detail, I think that would be helpful to everyone.
Okay, we have contractual obligations, both to Bosse's and to our staff. And as their salaries go up, due to those contractual obligations, the costs go up every year. Bosse's, they raise their costs every year. I think if we were to think about it, we had a lot of software in the past. I mean, that's a, it's a miniscule cost in the percentages, but even our software costs as we've rolled out the one-to-one devices, there are a lot of free services which are now charging us if the teachers want to keep using them because that's their best way to keep moving things forward. So the cost of paper goes up, the cost of natural gas goes up, the cost of electricity goes up, everything that touches our students goes up. So that cost is not all salaries. So that cost is not all salaries, but it is a combination of everything that goes up. And if you think about your own home, personal budgets, I know my groceries go up every year, I know my utilities go up, I know my car insurance goes up, everything is constantly moving forward. So when you think about it, that New York State is only giving us $28,000 to keep up, it has to come from somewhere, or else we'll just have to do budget cuts.
So, in order to add a classroom, and we're in a really great time at Eden, in which case, we've gone from approximately 78 to 80 students in a class at GLP, to now 100, or just a little over 100, depending on the grade level, that are rolling up into third grade. So when we say we want to add a third grade classroom, we actually have to add the teacher, plus also all the specials. So it becomes a piece of the library, a piece of computers, a piece of art, and a piece of many other specials that our students take. So a 1.0 FTE, or a one teacher for a classroom, is really getting budgeted more like a 1.4, I think.
Yes, and we also consider in those increased costs, there is, we pay for their Medicaid and Medicare, as everyone pays in their paycheck. An employer pays half, .0765, the employee pays .0765. We pay a contribution to the retirement system that they belong to, and then we have an employer contribution, much like everyone has in their own private life, when they work for their So, we will be, I will be looking forward to, when we get more finalized numbers from the state, then we'll be able to see what direction the Board of Education wants to take this in. I'm feeling that tonight, I'm going to not get a lot of direction yet, but that will come when we have more static state aid numbers.
I just wanted to say, or ask, I know you said it before, but if we did not have this extra third grade teacher, what would those class sizes look like? If we crunched it and kept it at the four? They would be pretty large, wouldn't they?
No, I think it's a really great question. If we come back a number of years ago, we had five teachers in each grade, both GLP and the elementary school. And then when the enrollment decreased, we successively went down to four in each grade. And in the past three years, we've now started to go back up. So kindergarten now has five, first grade has five, second grade has five. And so we've been able to keep those numbers down to what we believe is best practice for our primary school. Right now, I think our enrollment at third grade is somewhere between 100 and 102. That's without any new, new students coming in. We always anticipate a few new in the summer, and I've seen a few new houses going up, which is also super exciting. So if in fact, you do the numbers, and you find that there's only four teachers in third grade, and there's 102 students, divided out by four, you're going to get 25 to 26 in a class. And so, Ellen, you were the most articulate for me a couple of years back, where you said, 25 to 26 is a lot for little kids, but the rooms at GLP are just too small. It's a 1939 building-
The elementary.
I'm sorry, for the elementary school. It's a 1939 building, does not accommodate extra space for anybody in a classroom. And so, while our teachers, I believe, could figure out how to teach students that are 25, the room itself does not, which does not allow our teachers to teach as well as they can. And so we've tried to make a true concerted effort to keep those numbers at 23, 24 at best, until we can possibly go out for another capital project and take a look at what it is that we can do in this building to make it more 21st century educationally sound. Because right now, it's a 1939 room.
All right, well, I'm going to move forward to the next slide, and we're going to talk about the remaining budget schedule. April 16th is the date that the Board of Education is slated to adopt a budget. I will have finalized numbers with your decision at that point, on where you want to go with it. I will give you what the levy anticipation will be and things like that. Because we'll have, we hope that we'll have an on-time budget, and if we do, then we'll have exact numbers for the state. Typically, the state kicks in about $200,000 more when they come through with the state aid from the legislative branch than the governor does. We don't know what to expect this year, because it's the first time in a long time that the entire government, both the legislative and the governors off of the executive branch, are all the same party. So no one really has a crystal ball or history to rely on to say what will hap, what typically happens, because it's a new dawn. It's a new era right now. So that, on April 24th is the last date that I have to tell New York State what this Board of Education has adopted. We will have a public hearing on May 7th to let the public become aware of what's going on in the district and what we're planning. And then May 21st, we would ask, we would invite the public into our house to come and vote for our budget. Questions for Laura?
So I'm just going to go on record. I will not be here April 16th or May 7th due to business travel outside of the state.
Will you be able to be here through?
I thought, when I made this travel schedule, I thought we were having a meeting on Wednesday the 17th, and I'll be at Atlanta at the time, so.
The April one is always on a Tuesday, because of BOSEs. Carolyn, I would, I would challenge you with something as well, too. We've always had kids vote, we've always had school on budget vote day. We've changed our, our schedule this year to not have students on budget vote date for security reasons. So somehow, I really do still need our students to know, and I'm sorry, I can't see you, Angelia, but to, to know that we still want them to vote. So if you guys can figure out a way to get the vote out to the kids to come in, that would be really nice. Okay?
That concludes our final community forum for the budget season.
Take a two-minute break or so?
Sure.
Sure.